Welcome to our regular board meeting for September. And we're going to start with a roll call, Kinsey. Oh, we're not going to do that? Oh, okay. All right, would everyone please rise for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under one equal liberty and justice for all.
Would someone please read the mission statement? Thank you.
We educate all students to be college, career, and community-ready, inspired to succeed in our diverse world.
Okay, next is the land acknowledgement. I'll read that. "We, the members of the Green Bay area Public School District, recognize and honor the original inhabitants of northeast Wisconsin. Our district lives, works, and learns upon the ancestral homelands of the Monominee and Ho-Chunk nations and the current homeland of Oneida Nation. We acknowledge the twelve diverse and vibrant Wisconsin First Nations who have persevered here since before recorded time and continue to be integral parts of our community. We uphold our responsibility to repair relationships, initiate partnerships, and stand with all First Nation communities." Okay. Next, we're going to hear from our Intracity Student Council members. Would you please introduce yourselves and then proceed?
Hi, I'm Viva Winkler. I'm a senior at Southwest and I'm the president of Intracity Student Council.
Hello, I'm Andres Mora and I am a junior at Preble High. All right. This, some good news has been going on at Preble. Preble won their first football game for a while against Southwest recently. Girls cross-country won their Saturday meet and everybody PR'd. Girls tennis beat Southwest and musical season started and this year's musical is Beauty and the Beast.
All right, over at East, they had their homecoming week. Their seniors won hall decorating and homecoming float and their first National Honor Society meeting was this past week. Over at West, cross-country season for the boys is going pretty well. Their homecoming week is this week and they have their game on Friday and dance on Saturday. And at Southwest, we had our homecoming week. We had hallway decorating, had our homecoming dance on Saturday, game on Friday. We unfortunately lost. Our band performed our marching show and alumni cheer members actually joined our cheer team for the game, which was really cool. And our seniors won our powder puff game.
Very good. Is that everything? You'd think it's everything, except it's not quite. So, our, our president of Intracity Student Council recently had a really big event down in Madison where she, that she took part in. Can you please kind of describe to people what, what you were able to do?
Yeah, so over the summer, I was selected to go to Badger Girl State and there I was nominated the state superintendent. So through that opportunity, I was invited to introduce the state superintendent at the State of Education address this past Thursday, which was a really great opportunity.
Look up at the screen there. That's a really nice honor. And I'm really, I'm, we're proud of you. So, well done. So, well, thank you guys. Okay, we're going to move on to the public forum. As of now, I just have the one person. Is there anybody else? Who would like to speak? Okay, so Carrie, forgive me, Kilpikowski, all right, very good. Come on up to the podium. Just let us know your name and address and you have five minutes.
Carrie Kilpikowski, 3046 Beth Drive, Green Bay, Wisconsin, 54311. Bear with me, I'm pretty nervous about this.
Take your time, you're fine.
You're Green Bay Public School District members. I, Carrie Kilpikowski, am a parent with a child in the Green Bay Public School District. Recently, we've had my daughter evaluated twice for special education and was not approved. The first evaluation team, I was instructed to just give my daughter a calculator. To me, that was not a good enough response. The second evaluation team only offered a 504 plan. We were also waiting for an IEE to be done. I was then asked to have my daughter re-evaluated at her neuropsych doctor to see if there was any underlying medical issues. I do, did do that August 4th. Once I received the report back, I provided Sean Manders O'Brien a copy of the report. The report clearly shows a significant learning delay in my child. I'm doing everything possible to get my child the help that she needs to be successful. As a parent, I believe that there's a child struggling as much as my daughter and the proof is there why we keep getting denied and now does the school district keep pushing her away for special education classes? I have spent the last two years with her math interventionist who followed the MLSS guidelines and more so the last six months, week over week, trying to find the help for my daughter. I appreciate the hard work and dedication of our school board members and staff and I look forward to hearing how this will be addressed going forward as I believe there are more students like my daughter falling through the cracks of the district. I would like to see this addressed within a week or further action can and may take place to get my daughter the help and support as she needs. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Okay, then we're going to move on to our legislative update and that'll be Lynn Gerlach.
Let's hope I'm looking at the right piece of paper this time, folks. Okay, let's see. You have the legislative update in front of you and I'm not going to read it to you, but we'll just quickly go over these things. The bill about having an accessible opioid antagonist in each school is now under amendment, so we can look forward to that in the future. The bill, Bill 44, about inspection of indoor air quality in schools has been read in the Committee on Education, so that is apparently has a way to go yet. The interesting thing is, I thought I hadn't heard about this before, is that it would mandate an air quality inspection every two years and if someone had complained, they would get a copy of the complaint. So, it kind of made me wonder what the genesis of that issue was. Per pupil revenue limits, that's very important to us. And as we are told here for Senate Bill 70, the Senate voted along party lines to override the partial veto of Governor Evers that raised per pupil revenue limits for the next 402 years. The matter now moves on to the Assembly. The, you've been expecting this, the half credit of financial literacy in order to graduate has now been passed and that will start with a class that graduates in 2028. So that's the ones that start, I think, in fall next year, right? Prosecution of sexual crimes, I'm sorry, I don't have any background on this. All I know is it's on to the governor for signature, something about closing a loophole that prevented prosecution of sexual crimes and it came to me under education and so I put it in here. Failing to stop for a school bus, penalties increase. You probably are all in favor of that. It's going to the Assembly for a vote. I thought this second last one was very interesting. I didn't know there was a law that public schools can't start before September 1st, but it is now being proposed that they be allowed to start before Labor Day, but apparently they have to make Labor Day a four-day weekend. They have to take off the Friday and the Monday if they start before Labor Day. So, that is, let's see, that's, I, I, what is the status of that? I think that's just something that's been introduced. And then the last one, I think, is very important to all of us and that is about transparency and reporting voucher payments. You probably all remember that Act 89 in 2021 that established a dashboard to give taxpayers access to financial information about individual school and school district spending. This dashboard was recommended by an 11-person advisory committee made up of six Republicans, three Democrats, and two appointees by Jill Underley. Despite the committee's unanimous recommendations, lobbyists for the private choice movement are trying to block transparency by advocating for the exclusion of payments to private school vouchers in the public dashboard. So again, that is not a done deal. That's just something that is before the Assembly right now.
Thank you. Brian?
I just have a question for whoever can answer this. I believe we have a financial literacy graduation requirement in Green Bay, correct? I think we addressed it several years ago and I Googled it. Obviously, it was a news report, but we do.
I see net heads nodding.
Excellent. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Any other questions? Okay. Thank you, Lynn. Is there any chance that we could get some air moving in this room? Like, it is so humid and, and uncomfortable. Thank you. All right, next is a referendum updates. Is that going to be Josh? Or? Okay. So these are the, we've kind of committed to having at all our meetings, update on our last, our, the referendum that was passed in November, the huge commitment our community made toward our public schools and frankly, it's the highlight of these meetings as far as I'm concerned to hear all the, all the progress that is being made. So, take it away, Josh.
Sure, not a ton of updates since the last meeting. Preble did host their, their first home football game on the new turf. We've had a bit of a delay on the track surfacing and that got pushed a week. So we're working with UWGB to move some competitions around there so that we can get that surface on and cured before it gets too cold. The tennis courts at Southwest are now officially complete. They've been nearly complete for quite a while, but there was a technical problem with that surface that's now been resolved. And we're going to meet, actually tomorrow morning, on finalizing the, the concepts on, on the West Stadium. So, we're about to get real heavy into the West Stadium as well.
Okay. I did go to that football game. Boy, the place was absolutely packed. There were so many people there and the field is just gorgeous. I can't wait till the, it's like, the, the stands and everything are, are done. But what has been done this year is remarkable and a testament to, again, the taxpayers' commitment to our public schools. And the, I don't know if all of you have managed to see, I know the Facebook feed had the renderings for the East weight room and workout space. They're beautiful. I mean, I, I don't know if that's going to be the final form, but so needed and long overdue and, and just very appealing. So, I'm, I'm really excited about that. Go ahead, Brian.
You know, we've mentioned multiple times, especially with Preble, the accommodations that East made to allow the high school, their first game, I think, was played at East as an away team. But the other athletic directors in their conference and in the area have been working really well with the district, especially with the ADs at Preble. I see this from my officiating side of DePierre taking, like, another school taking two home games for us because of the track situation and stuff. And it's just nice to see the cooperation throughout Brown County between the ADs, the teams, the officials, everything to get this set up. So the flexibility within the county is fantastic. So, your team's been doing a great job, but we, we've got to thank some of our neighboring schools to help out as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or, go ahead, Viva?
I just want to add that our Southwest tennis, girls tennis team had their first practice on the new courts today and there were a lot of girls jumping up and down outside the courts.
I heard rumors that, that the boys soccer team at Preble had kind of half kiddingly asked if they could sleep on the, on the new turf overnight. I think they've had their first match there. It's, it's just a lot of happy, happy kids and I'm just really proud of our community for, for getting this done. So, any other questions? Any comments? Okay, thanks, Josh. Okay, next, under action items. Brian, I think you had a rec, or a motion.
So I just want to make a motion to modify the agenda. It's move action items B and C to the end of the action items after what's currently listed as L and M.
Second.
We're, go ahead, Brian, yes.
Andrew Becker is at a family event right now and he asked that this be postponed so he could be here for that part. So that's why I'm making the motion.
Okay. I think this is just all in favor, kind of, all in favor, say aye. Opposed? Okay, so then those will be moved to, to the end of the agenda of the action items. And so we're going to go ahead and take A. And yes, we have moved the selection of the consultant for boundaries and equity analysis, which will probably be a somewhat lengthy conversation and approval for placement of the gifted learner program at Leonardo da Vinci as well, which we, I don't know how lengthy that's going to be, but Mr. Becker, I'm sure will want to take part in that discussion. So, that'll be moved to the end of our action items. So, all right, so the, we're going to go on to approval of settlement offer for government entity claims against Juul. We've, we've already discussed this, so I think we, is there any further discussion? So if someone please read the motion.
Yeah, I will. I move that this confidential settlement agreement with Altria be accepted and that the district claims pursuant to this matter be resolved. Second.
Again, discussion or comments? Okay. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to skip B, we're going to skip C and move on to D, approval of 2023-24 curriculum updates and consent, can, can content essential documents. Would someone please read that motion?
I move that the content essential documents as presented be approved.
Second.
All right. Conversation, questions? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is E, approval of Head Start Program Guidelines and Operational Procedures Handbook and Policy Council Bylaws. Go ahead.
I move that the changes to the Head Start Program Guidelines and Operational Procedures Handbook, including selection criteria for the 2023-2024 program year and changes to the Policy Council bylaws for the 2023-2024 program year be, as presented, be approved. Second.
Any questions? Any discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Next is F, Student Services Interventionist Job Description Approval.
I move that the Student Services Interventionist Job Description as presented be approved.
Can I get a second?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Second. Okay, any questions? Any discussion? Go ahead, Brian.
This is a great position. Hopefully, we can continue funding, assuming it passes after the grant goes out and we see some good return on it, but I'm always concerned when we don't have the funding after, but the grant should be well spent.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay. H, modify the table of organization to change the position of human resources benefits specialist to position of human resources manager benefits emphasis and associated job description. Hang on. Oh, I certainly did, sorry. Back to G, folks, modify the table of organization to change the position of district investigator to the position of human resources manager investigations emphasis and associated job description.
I move that the table of organization be modified to change the position of district investigator 12-month manager salary group level 3, 700, I'm sorry, 72,161 to 83,910 to the position of human resources manager investigations emphasis 12 months manager salary group level 2, 79,260 to 92,163 and that the associated job description as presented be approved. Second.
Discussion, questions? Okay, Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
I should have mentioned this at the top of these action items. I usually try to do this, but we have had discussion and presentations around these action items already in a couple of weeks to think about them, digest them, and do our own kind of research if needed. So, but tonight offers another opportunity to have those discussions if needed, but we, we've already done some of that, so. Okay. Let's see, so I was G, okay, now on to H, modify the table of organization to change the position of human resources benefits specialist to the position of human resources manager benefits emphasis and associated job description.
I move that the table of organization be modified to change the position of human resources benefits specialist 12 months manager salary group level 3, 72,161 to 83,910 to the position of human resources manager benefits emphasis 12 months manager salary group level 2, 79,260 to 92,163 and that the associated job description as presented be approved. Second.
Questions of discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
On to I, modification of the table of organization to change the position of human resources data specialist to the position of human resources manager data emphasis and associated job description. Someone read the motion.
I move that the table of organization be modified to change the position of human resources data specialist 12 months manager salary group level 3, 72,161 to 83,910 to the position of human resources manager data emphasis 12 months manager salary group level 2, 79,260 to 92,163 and that the associated job description as presented be approved. Second.
Go ahead, Laura.
I wanted to just share for record that all of these modifications that were made when we reviewed them on the proposals, these actually were all resulting in a savings to the district. So none of these, even though there's, there's modifications and changes to the positions, I just wanted to reiterate that this was not a cost, but a savings to the district overall with these changes.
It's basically a giant reorganization of our HR department to kind of realign and, but ultimately is going to save money. Okay. Any other discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. Onto J, modification, modify the table of organization to change the position of human resources leaves specialist to the position of human resources manager leaves emphasis and associated job description.
I move that the table of organization be modified to change the position of human resources leave specialist 12 months manager salary group level 3, 72,000, 72,161,000 to 83,910,000 to the position of human resources manager leaves emphasis 12 months manager salary group level 2, 79,260 to 92,163 and that the associated job description as presented be approved. Second.
Okay, questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, next is K, modify the table of organization to change the position of human resources talent acquisition specialist to the position of human resources manager talent acquisition emphasis and associated job description.
I move that the table of organization be modified to change the position of human resource data specialist 12 months manager salary group level 3, 72,161 dollars to 83,910 to the position of human resources manager data emphasis 12 months manager salary group level 2, 79,260 to 92,163 and that the associated job description as presented be approved.
Second.
Questions or discussion? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Thank you. So there's one more of these. Modify the table of organization- Modify the Table of Organization to Eliminate Two Teaching and Learning Clerical and Add Teaching and Learning Budget and Data Manager and Associated Job Description.
I move that the table of organization be modified to eliminate two Teaching and Learning Clerical Level Five, 26,97 per hour, 12 months, to the Position of Teaching and Learning Budget and Data Manager 12 months Manager Salary Group Level Five, 64,000, 68 dollars to 74,498 dollars and that the associated job description, as presented, be approved.
Second. Discussion or questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, we're gonna go, go ahead, Brian. Yes.
I'd like to make a motion that we flip the order of the two remaining items. Previously, item selection, I'm sorry, item B selection for, of consultant for boundary and equity analysis and approval of placement of the Gifted Learning Program at Leonardo da Vinci School, so we address item C, which is Da Vinci before item B.
Second. All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed? Okay. So we are going to now address under action item, action items, letter C. Would someone please read that motion?
I move that the placement of the Gifted Learning Program remain at Leonardo da Vinci School, as presented, be approved.
Second. Okay. I'm gonna open the floor here to any comments or questions. Go ahead. Of course, sorry.
I appreciate the public input that we've received on this. I'm glad that we have members of the Da Vinci community here, which is part of why we flip-flopped it here. And I recognize the leadership's position on this. I'm hesitant to vote for this and will probably vote against it for two primary reasons. This whole program that we've been working on is a once-in-generation opportunity for us to do things and make some systematic changes within the district as far as building opportunities. And what I mean by that is, I understand the concern about the, I'm sorry, the strength that the community members have currently with what's at Da Vinci. However, given that opportunity to provide the library space, the things that were mentioned, the ASPR studies, the classroom spaces with slightly larger opportunities on there, I think gives us the opportunity to look towards the students that'll be there in 10 years and 15 years and that we have that opportunity to do this. I recognize with the leadership and with where this, this bill, or with this proposal's going, that it's more than likely going to pass and I appreciate that fact and I appreciate the community members coming out. I just wanted to explain my reasoning and why I will probably vote against this. I think the programming is strong. I think that we have an opportunity to make it stronger in a, in a building that's, fits it better.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody else? James?
I appreciate that, Brian. And when we started all of this, we wrote down principles and guidance to the task force because when we get into decisions like this, they become emotional and we tend to place certain weight on certain items, but there are seven items and seven pieces of guidance that we provided and ultimately, I recognize and you have made it very clear and I agree with you that this is a generational opportunity, but the fact is, there are going to be dozens of schools within our district that don't receive attention, right? And so when we look at the seven guiding principles, all but the ATS and R guidance of, yeah, there, there are larger classrooms and there's lack of green space, whatever, none of the other ones make sense, right? When we start looking at the spend to move and everything, ultimately, I think having the guidance allows us to kind of level the plan field and look at it holistically. And I'm ultimately very, very concerned that we have referendum questions to create and those are going to be expensive items and I need to be able to justify and to quote Andrew Becker, green space and educational adequacy is important on a continuum, right? And when we start looking at where on that continuum this lies, I just could not make a case for moving and reinvesting because there's been a lot of investment in this building and I agree with you, it's not optimal, right? But it is in place. It is supported by the community of teachers and it's adequate for, for the district, so. I appreciate that.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I agree with you, James, and I want to, I probably told you folks this before, but I just want to emphasize that there's a cascading effect. And if you move Da Vinci to Webster, then the question is, where are you going to move Webster and the Fine Arts Program? And remember that a lot of money was also invested in that school to make it a fine arts center. And being the board member with the least knowledge of and understanding of these schools, I have toured both Da Vinci and Webster. I've seen every inch of the schools and I do believe that the people at Da Vinci have done a good job of making use of the space that they have. Principals understand that you put smaller classes in smaller rooms and bigger classes in bigger rooms and they're doing that. And I have, I've told you, I've seen the kids crossing Doty Street to go to the playground with the teacher acting as crossing guard and I was confident and comfortable that it was safe. And I, I agree with you that we should leave Da Vinci and consequently Webster alone.
Go ahead, Brian.
So point clarification on this, it says, well, I understand what you're saying with the not shifting to Webster, that doesn't, this vote does not impact any potential changes at Webster other than one school not going to that spot, so just for clarification.
It's a standalone decision. Yep. Okay. Anybody else? Go ahead, Laura.
I just wanted to share that I do support this decision. I think for me primarily, it was based on the information that no short or long-term savings would be significant with this, with this change. However, I, as a board member, I've had parents contact me that weren't supportive of the change and I know we, we have to take all of that into account and make the best decision and be responsible with our dollars. But I've also had parents contact me concerned about misinformation from the parent group and parents coming and saying, why is the leader of PTO or whoever it may be in, within the parent organization sharing this misinformation that you're planning to move our kids fall of '23? This was in spring. So I think that I would just hope that we can be mindful of sharing correct information with all of our schools that are going to be facing this coming up and ensuring that everybody has adequate, fair information so that it can make this difficult job even a little bit easier for all of us.
Thank you. I received some of that information as well and I found it rather disturbing, so. Dr. Tiller?
So just let the board know, moving forward and let the public know, one of my tasks that my team will look at is any type of closure that will move forward, we make sure we involve the administration. Then we'll make sure we involve the teachers. Then we'll make sure we involve the parents and parent meeting. So we'll have all these type of meetings prior, so we'll get input because it's very important to our staff and to me as the new superintendent that we bring everybody along and make everything transparent.
No surprises. Go ahead, Lynn.
And just a point of clarification, if I may ask, is it not true that as we make these difficult decisions that it doesn't mean that any specific decision is going to be implemented immediately or even in the next school district, a school year, right? There will be a timetable and it could take a long time.
Okay. Yep. Brian?
I also hope that we'll continue our strong relationship with the city on all of our schools that are within the city boundaries of making sure that we have the safest environment for our students, especially with any partnerships that take place with the city and any other groups that are within the neighborhood on there. And we continue to make sure that Da Vinci is one of the safest buildings and safest properties for our students 24 hours a day on it, so. And I trust our strong relationship with the city that that'll continue to be a priority.
Right. Because Da Vinci is not the only downtown school we have. We have a lot of them, so. All right. Is there anything, anything else? Before we take this vote? All right. Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Andrew, are you able? Thank you. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual board member votes are as follows. Becker, yes. McCoy, yes. Leighton Warren, yes. Welch, yes. Lyerly, yes. Mills, no. Gerlach, yes. Okay, motion carries. We're going to move on now to the selection of consultant for boundary and equity analysis. Could, let's see here. Yeah, we're going to have a kind of a placeholder motion so that we can start discussion. So go ahead, James.
As a placeholder, I move that Cooperative Strategies, which is listed first on our rubric, be contracted to assist the Board of Education with the boundary and equity analysis.
I'll second that. Can we second it? At this point? Um. Just before we start this, I just want to put, just put it out there that we did use a rubric. But it is a tool. It's not a decider. It's just something to help us guide our discussion. I, I don't know how useful it was for me to really fill that out. But it's not, it's like, we're not deciding based on those scores. So with that, we can go ahead and talk about.
So.
Go ahead, James.
So, you know, if we can use the rubric to guide the conversation, going just left to right, Andrew, if you have it in front of you, just to help, especially since you're remote. The proposed cost of services, when we started this conversation during our workings, during the presentations, it was reported that that would be scored via a equation that the district uses in rubrics like this. In a conversation with Josh, since we're not going to do just a quantitative evaluation, we can have a conversation about that and I would put to the board if it is okay that given that the costs associated with vendor A, which we'll call Cooperative Strategies and MGT were clustered together and that MGT's cost was in between a high and low for the vendor, I would like to proceed giving the administration the ability to negotiate because both said that they could right-size the, the engagement. And so I'd like to see if we can navigate and make a decision on the other characteristics of the presentation and leave that as kind of equal between the two. And if we need to put a value in a motion that we do a, do not exceed amounts, which, you know, we can agree to if, if we needed to do that. Is everyone comfortable with that?
Did you catch all that, Andrew? Andrew?
I'm, I'm fine with that. Sorry, the muting is awkward, but I am fine with it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
All right. Yeah, let's see. I, I'm sorry. I'm not sure exactly how to proceed here.
So if I make a suggestion, if we want to just go around and we can start with Brian on one and then we can start with Lynn on the other one and just for the category, if you want to have any comments or kind of, sorry, and if, Brian, if you want to concede and let Nancy start, that's fine. On just the, if you have any comments or want to say how you kind of graded the two for that particular category and then we can just kind of determine as we go if we're building a case towards, you know, one or the other, we can kind of shape the conversation that way. So Nancy, when I say, and the demonstrated ability to meet the scope of services, how they compared?
I thought both of them were pretty good in that area. I might be mixing up what goes in what. Okay. The thing I, the one thing I thought, the bottom one, MGT was better at, like they both said they have the CIG, set it GIC or GIS. Okay, so they both have that, but then MGT said that they had more than just that. And I thought, would that be helpful for us? Do we need that? So that would be one thing in a difference that I can think of.
For me, my, I wasn't able to attend when we watched these, but I was so thankful for the YouTube recordings, so I was able to watch the recordings of both of the presentations. And I, I, in terms of, I just jotted notes. I didn't actually score these, just used it as a tool. I thought for the ability to meet our scope of services, of course, with equity being a huge focus, I thought that corporate Cooperative Strategies incorporated that much more throughout their presentation and talked in depth about their diversity index by school, the different things they looked at, non-white population, average level of adult educational attainment, which is an interesting point that I actually had not really thought about, but they, you know, we, we know that that influences education for children. Also, looking at the free or reduced lunch, there was a whole host of things that I really, that rose to the top for me in terms of the scope of our services related to equity in addition to the, looking at the experience, looking at the boundaries.
I'll tell you that I didn't use this category as a differentiator. I think the references provided and the case studies provided and the experiences of each of the consultants demonstrated that they could meet our scope, right? There were no, they, they would not be constrained or challenged to meet the the RFP requirements. I kind of used the next one as a differentiator around quality and timeliness, so.
I would second that. They were quite equal in most categories. Just going back to proposed costs, though, for me, Cooperative Strategies, from just what they put on paper, edged out MGT a little bit as far as just, I've worked out the math is how much average per hour? Like they, you know, how many hours this work is going to take? This is what we're going to charge for it. Now, we're, we're going to, sounds like we're going to negotiate that a little bit, no matter who we hire. But Cooperative Strategies was able to come in per hour on an average substantially less, so they, they, they got my edge on that. With regard to demonstrated ability, I was, they, they came up quite even with me, so. Andrew, can you, do you want to chime in here?
Thank you. I didn't score the rubric either. I, I think on, on cost and just generally across the board, I, I would give the, I just, I just thought in every way these were, ones were superior to, to MGT. I think they just had an edge for me across the board and that's how I felt kind of holistically after the presentation, so that's where I'm at.
Thank you. Lynn?
I didn't think there was a huge difference, but I did feel and I did see the presentations and went through the packets. And I just felt that in terms of the ability to meet the scope of services that MGT just simply has. that MGT just simply has more experience. And I do believe that their own proprietary GIS system is very appropriate for equity measurement. And, and I felt very confident that they could do that well. So I was a little bit, a little bit more confident with MGT than cooperative strategies in this category.
Okay. Brian? Go ahead. All right, that's fine. So we're going to move on to ability to provide quality and timely services.
Lynn, do you want to start this one so that we don't make you laugh all the time?
It's okay. I did feel strongly that in this case, we had one company that was offering us two time, time, what do I want to call it? You know, I guess, you know, a, a short version and a long version. I think one was four months, one was seven months. And, and then the other one, MGT, said, we're going to do a nine-month program. This is how we do it. And they laid it out. I thought it was realistic. I felt more confident that they knew exactly how to take nine months and get the job done. Without any question, I did, the four-month one by cooperative strategies to me was not going to get the job done. I wasn't sure about the seven-month one. And I have been assured that even if we choose to go with MGT and their nine-month program that they've done so many times successfully, that doesn't mean we're going to start it next year or that, you know, that, I mean, immediately as soon as it, as soon as we get the decision. So. We're not going to implement everything immediately. So I guess what I'm saying is we have time to do it well. And I feel confident that MGT might just be a little bit better prepared to do that.
Andrew, you're up next on this. All right. Okay. All right.
Thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm unmuted now?
Yep, we can hear you.
Okay, it's just awkward to toggle. Same. Same thing again. It's a, it's a holistic preference and I'm just less impressed with MGT across, across the board. I don't have anything new to add here, although I do like the, I think inadequate jobs can be done in a shorter timeline, which was also an advantage.
We, we kind of missed that last bit that you said, Andrew.
Oh, the, the timeframe too, the, those, I, I think they, they seem to convince me that they can be adequate in a, in a shorter timeframe and without cutting corners.
Without cutting corners. Okay, thank you. All right, yep. In this category, I really have nothing to add. I, I felt like they were both able to do the job. And quality and time, with quality and timely and timely fashion. So, James.
I did use this as the primary differentiator between the two vendors. Cooperative strategies, you know, one of the advantages of being an incumbent is that we have a pre-existing relationship with them that the district, so they appreciate. So, you know, our internal reference is very, very positive for cooperative strategies. They've done our demographic studies in the past. They have access to our data. So the nature of organizing that work, I think, would be more concise and structured. And we've already been through that with them, where MGT, I think we would have methodology questions and and just making sure that we establish that relationship. So from a timeliness, what we're getting for what we, you know, for the amount that we pay. And in the presentation, it may have just been me, but the cooperative strategies take on working with committees seemed very concise. And they had a, a answer of here's how we do it. And whereas MGT was open and said, you know, we'll structure that relationship. However, the district wants us to structure that relationship. And, and in my mind, we're paying for advice and paying for that expertise in this. And so when I look at the quality of the services rendered, I, I just use it to differentiate pro cooperative strategies versus MGT.
I don't have anything, anything to add.
Okay, Nancy?
And James, when we were talking before, you talked about peace for the community. Could you talk about that a little bit for us?
Sure. So I think what you were referring to is MGT has a, the ability in real time to alter district lines and, and kind of model in real time boundary changes. And their presentation, and I, I hate doing this because I, my memory might not be completely accurate, but it, it felt like they were proposing that they could in front of a community gathering or with, in collaboration with a committee, do that real-time modeling, right? And the, the cooperative strategies approach was different. They said, hey, let's walk them through the process and we can actually have them go in and help us build a set of boundaries so that they know all of the ins and outs and the work related to that. But then we will provide reports with the pros, the cons, and all of the different aspects of that decision. And so cooperative strategy was here's a analysis. And I, I compare that to here's some real-time modeling capabilities. And neither of the vendors in my mind proposed or priced out enough community engagement to kind of see that process through a bunch of iterations. So I, I kind of diminished the value in my mind because, you know, yes, it's cool. But you have to put that cool inside of a process. And I just don't think they're bid, you know, kind of solidify that, yeah, we have enough time with community to model, 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 and everyone arrive at a decision. So that's.
Okay. I've lost track of what. Oh, okay. All right, you're good. All right. So the next one is qualifications and experience of the service provider. We're starting with you, Nancy.
Well, I think they were, they both seemed qualified. But one thing I liked that cooperative strategies did talk about was how it's not just kind of like a one-shot deal, you know? And I think that if we had a company that, you know, we could go to more often, maybe we wouldn't end up in a situation like this where we have so many things to do. If we were continually looking at things and projecting. So.
I think that, I think that we've all come to that conclusion that this needs to happen. This analysis has to happen much more frequently than it has been. So, okay. Laura, did you have anything?
No, I, I thought both of them had a wealth of experience. Definitely.
James?
No, I didn't differentiate on this qual- characteristic.
Yeah, I'm the same. So Andrew, did you have anything to add to this category?
Um, no, nothing, nothing to add.
Thank you. Lynn?
I did know that MGT had a larger staff, which might be a positive.
Okay. Go ahead.
So Lynn, I spent a lot of time there as well, and I agree with you on paper. The only thing that I took into account, and I don't know the answer to this question, was that employee count, they had multiple subsidiaries and lines of business. And I didn't know if I was seeing a total MGT consulting headcount or the headcount for specific work that were, is related to this bid. And that's why I was like, it, I, it's hard for me to imagine a 500-person force doing this type of consulting. It seems large. So.
I mean, both of these entities will assign people to our, us, and that's who we'll see that work through. You know, in that way, I don't know that they're very different from each other. So. Okay, then the last is just. No, it's our, I, to me, I mean, there's, there's intangibles. And I don't know if we want to talk it, you know, talk about that with regard to this rubric. You know, like I liked that cooperative strategies recognized the emotional aspects to this process and said so in a forthright way. It's an obvious thing to say. It's an obvious thing. We all understand it. But just to have this company understand that we're heading into some very emotionally heavy work. Felt, felt like a, like a good thing. The, the prior experience is probably not intangible. That, that's a real thing. Familiarity with our data. I'm hoping that, you know, that will save us time and possibly expense in this process. I, I guess that's all I have for intangibles. But does anyone else have anything that they'd like to, like to say? Go ahead. I'm sorry.
I just have a question. So cooperative strategies now, because they have two different price ranges, but they said they will negotiate. What's, what's the other one going to go up negotiate as well?
I walked away saying that they probably would, right? Because responding to an RFP, you have to put a number on, on the page because it's a requisite, you know, item. But, you know, what's important is that we give the districts an opportunity to right-size the engagement to our needs out there. So I would not, because MGT didn't propose a range, hold that against them.
Go ahead, Lynn.
I noticed that cooperative strategies didn't just propose two prices. They proposed two different approaches. I mean, it's the same approach, but I, I compared them and, and the one that is seven months and costs a lot more has a lot more steps in it. And I wondered if we, when we make this decision, are we going, if we choose cooperative strategies, are we going to choose which one of those programs we're going to ask for?
I think the least expensive one didn't have the public.
It had limited public engagement right up front, right? So there wasn't iterative.
I thought it had another section afterwards, looking at the timeline. I could have that wrong.
Like a review, right? So input at the beginning, kind of a review of proposals at the end. So I, I agree with, with Lynn that I'm not, I don't think the motion as it's stated requires that we say option A or option B. Because it's just to, to partner with and a consulting firm. But again, I, I would give the district the, the ability to right-size the engagement, meaning the, the timelines and the project plan always resolves down to a time and materials, right? That's why they priced out the hours and, and included the, the cost of, of travel and stuff like that. So ultimately, I think that you could partner with them to create both the, the structure of the project plan and tweak it however you feel like is necessary to support our particular use case, right? So I don't, I'm, I don't think we need to say option A or option B.
But we need to, but you mentioned putting a limit, like no more than.
But I, if we need to put a value in the motion, I, I do think that constraining the top end would be reasonable. And if that helps on people make a decision, if, if you want to modify the motion with a, not to exceed $125,000 because that's the hot top end of the cooperative strategies and that's the motion on the table.
I think that's a good stopgap, you know, to make sure.
Okay.
So, okay. Um, go ahead, Lynn.
Another question. I can't remember who was in the room when we had those presentations, but I think there were some staff in the room. Right? Was it some staff members were with us? It wasn't just the board. And tell me if this is inappropriate. I always like to get the view of staff, you know, they, they do this for a living and I don't. And I wonder if we could ask if, if any of the staff have anything that they'd like to say, is that not okay?
Um, I don't know if I'd want to put them on the spot necessarily, since the board is, the board is, this, this is the decision of the board. So I'm sorry, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but it's the vote of the board and we probably should leave it that way. Do, Dr. Tiller, do you agree? Okay. Okay. Any other questions? Any other discussion? Kinsey, can you read the motion as it is right now?
That cooperative strategies be contracted to assist the Board of Education with the boundary and equity analysis.
Can you add? Can you?
I would need a motion to amend them. Motion on the table.
Can some, are you, is everyone comfortable amending? First of all, Andrew, are you still there?
Yeah. Yeah.
Are you, are you comfortable with the motion and then amending it to put the, the the top amount to, to not exceed a certain amount? What's that?
Yes, are you talking about unanimous?
Go ahead, Andrew.
Are you talking about unanimous consent or someone making a motion to amend or what? I'm, I'm okay with the one, amending it one way or the other to be 125.
Great. I just wanted to get some feedback from you. I don't want you to feel left out of the decision. So go ahead.
I'll unmute if I have anything.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Laura, as the chair, you can make a motion and offer it as a friendly to add that. So I think that's what you're trying to do. So offer it as a friendly to the maker of the motion.
Okay, you can, or you can make that.
I'm going to abstain on this vote. So it wouldn't be a good idea for me to.
Are you? Okay.
I move as a friendly to modify the motion on the table to add in an engagement not to exceed $125,000.
Okay, second. Is that an all in favor? Say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, the, the motion is amended.
And I, I vote, I vote aye.
Thank you, Andrew. All right. So, so Kinsey, can you read the whole thing again, just in its full?
Let me know what you think of this.
Okay.
The cooperative strategy, that cooperative strategies be contracted to assist the Board of Education with the boundary and equity analysis not to exceed the cost of $125,000.
Thank you. Okay, would anyone like to discuss this further or ask more questions? Are we ready to take a vote? Go ahead, Kinsey.
Online voting is now open. Andrew, do you want to take a voice vote?
I, I vote aye, I vote yes.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried. The results of the individual, individual board member votes are as follows. Gerlach, yes. Mills abstained. Lyerly, yes. Welch, yes. Leighton and Warren, yes. McCoy, yes. Becker, yes.
Okay, motion passes. Um, all right. Let's see here. We are now moving on to yeah, the consent agenda. Would someone please read motion?
I move that the consent agenda items as presented be approved.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion or questions? Kinsey?
Online voting is now open. Andrew, do you want a voice vote?
I vote aye.
All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with. All votes have been entered and the motion is carried with all board members voting in favor.
Okay, that actually is the end of our agenda for tonight. So with that, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Say aye. Aye. Oppose? We are adjourned. Thank you, Andrew.
You have been watching the Green Bay Area Public School District's Board of Education meeting. Please visit the school district's website, www.gbaps.org for more information on the district and future meeting dates. If you cannot fully access the information on this video, please let us know the accessibility issue you are having by calling 920-448-2025 or by email at communications@gbaps.org. We will try to provide the information to you in an alternative format and/or make the necessary improvements to make the information accessible.